Five seconds.
Call the meeting to order, and tonight we've got two special guests, and I'm going to ask Scouts Jordan Hughes and Erin Alderton from Cub Scout Troop 932 to come forward and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. And welcome to the July 5th Hard-to-Believe Post Falls City Council Meeting. It's always an honor to have young men like you lead us in the pledge.
Yeah, we should do that every time.
We should. Shannon, please note that all council members are present, and under ceremonies, announcements, appointments, presentations, do have a few announcements. The Post Falls Festival Parade is this Saturday, July 9th at 10:00 a.m. Come join us for the annual parade. The parade route will be on Southeast Way between Frederick and Idaho Streets. Parade entry applications can be picked up at the Chamber Office or online. And I don't see an online, would it be the Post Falls Chamber? I'm going to guess it's, yeah, the Chambers website.
I'm going to say yes.
Yeah, that's why I'm here. For parade information, please call the Post Falls Chamber of Commerce at 773-5016. McDonald's Big Wheel Race has Mr. Malloy written all over it. Is Fri-- sorry, Joe. Friday, July 8th at 6:30. I'm sorry, ages three to six. You're close, a lot closer than the rest of us. This is a free event. Big wheels will be available for the race, or you can bring your own. Be sure to stay until the end of all races for your chance to win a big wheel. Pre-registration at the Post Falls Recreation Office until Thursday, July 7th, or onsite Friday, July 8th from 5:00 till 6:15 p.m. And the location is down at Camelan Park Grand Pavilion. Blue Dog RV Movie Night in the Park, Friday, July 8th at dusk. This is a free event, a free event. Bring your family, friends, and neighbors for entertaining evening under the stars. The movie will begin at dusk around 9:00 p.m., and we don't have a location. Is it at Blue Dog RV?
At Camelan.
At Camelan. Thank you very much. There's a one-day homemade craft fair, Saturday, July 9th, from 11:00 to 5:00 p.m., again at Camelan Park, the Grand Pavilion. The big back-end lawnmower drag race is a Friday, July 8th at 6:00 p.m. at Fifth and Williams. And also for, I think it's about the third year in a row, Treaty Rock Palooza, Saturday, July 16th at the Treaty Rock Center Business Complex, 418 West Southeast here in Post Falls, from 3:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. It's a family-friendly community event, Bring Your Own Chair, and it's brought to you by Steel Rolls Garage, Chaz Metaz, Down Draft Brewing, Frontline Fitness, and Northern Light Stoneworks. There is a bunch of events. There will be the Rhythm Dogs playing at 7:00 p.m., space painting, bouncy house, et cetera, et cetera. So again, that's Saturday, the 16th, from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. I think that's it on the announcements. Are there any declarations of conflict? Any changes to the agenda?
We do have one change under staff reports. We'll be adding an update on the Seventh Avenue construction, and Rob Pauls will be giving that presentation.
Mr. Wilson, we don't need any-- do we need a-- do you want a motion on that?
Yeah, a little bit.
Okay, he wants a little bit of a motion to amend the agenda, so I would--
So entertained.
So a little bit moved.
Motion second to amend the agenda, further discussion? CNN Shannon, please take the role.
Henderson?
Aye.
Porter's?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the June 20th, 2016 city council meeting. Item B is payables, June 14th through June 27th, 2016. Item C is Seventh Avenue Capacity and Safety Project, David Evans and Associates Supplemental Number One to the Professional Services Agreement. Item D is purchase of two four-wheel-drive, mid-sized crew cab pickups for the Parks Division and Building Division. Item E is disposal of a 1987 Chevy S10 pickup and a 1994 Mazda pickup. Item F is annexation agreement for the Hope Annexation. And G is findings of facts and conclusions for Country Meadows Subdivision Amendment.
Any questions? Mr. Wolf?
Got a couple of questions. I was hoping that maybe Bill could give more of an explanation on item C, the Seventh Avenue additional 16--
We have Rob Pauls here tonight.
Rob will do.
And is that part of the update we're going to get at the end?
And the update tonight is just we're getting a lot of phone calls asking about the project, so he's just going to give an overview of the projects, so this piece would not have been in that report.
Okay. Specifically, I'm curious about how we missed $16,000 worth of work.
Well, what we had occurring was there were some changes, one that we made to the plans late in the project, which were revisions compared to what staff had earlier indicated for the consultant to do. Part of that was on throat widths of the curb where we narrowed it up at the intersections. Part of it was bringing in striping back into the project. Initially, we had looked at removing that and had them remove it, and then we had them put back in. Those were actually the small items out of that total. A larger amount of that cost was the inclusion of street trees and land irrigation and sod into the project. We originally were not intending to have the irrigation system in there or the street trees. That was a late add to the project and not a part of the original scope. A further cost was the inclusion of ADA ramps at Spokane Street and Seventh Avenue. Initially, we were anticipating that we were going to put those ramps in with future signalization. ITD has changed course, and they do not want to see a signal at Seventh and Spokane Street, so that created an additional cost that we couldn't have with that project. And while we were at that, because of some other ADA issues, we threw in ADA ramps at the corner of Henry Street and Southeast Way, Compton Street and Southeast Way, and then with the marking of the angled parking on the project, that required an ADA stall to be designed and a ramp provided for each block that has marked on-street parking.
Okay. Great, thanks for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
I do. Do we have a purchasing policy? I noticed, especially on these trucks, why do we buy brand-new vehicles versus trying to find something that's used?
We do both. Typically, with the trucks, where we're replacing them, we have a spreadsheet that looks at our older vehicles when they get to where the cost of maintaining them is worth more than the vehicle. We go ahead and do a replacement, and we have the replacement fund, normally because the cost for us to go out to bid or piggyback is less expensive per dollar on the value of the vehicle than buying used. We will typically buy new. Russ, I don't know if you want to give a further explanation. Jim Porter's the one that actually does the bidding on those.
Okay.
I don't think I would have much to add to that, other than, you know, when you buy a new vehicle, you typically get more life out of it, so the long-term value is actually less cost over the life of the vehicle than it would be to buy used. If you buy used, we're going to be tripping that vehicle sooner than we would a new vehicle. We also get a warranty with a new vehicle, so if we do have any major issues, that will be taken care of, typically for a three-year, 36,000-mile warranty. For a used vehicle, we might get 90 days if we're lucky, so we-- the overall cost is important to consider.
So typically, what you'll see us buy the used vehicles on are things like our snowplows or snowplow blades, our vehicles for the police department that are not patrol vehicles, but the detectives use or the admin staff uses. And sometimes if we just know there's a good deal coming up out of the Highway District or through the state, they'll notify us by email, and we may actually replace with a used vehicle at that point. We don't pay that premium price that you pay for a used-- like, if I was to go buy a new vehicle, I'm going to pay a much higher price than the city does. The city gets the state's cost, or will piggyback off the state or Highway District, County, any other agency that has bid and got that. It's a pretty streamlined cost. I know with Canute's, then they pretty much don't make any money off our PD cars when we buy it from them.
Yeah, I kind of figured that was, you know, you're kind of stuck, I would imagine, with the police cars, but just like for a regular pickup. And I thought the price was--
Pretty damn good.
Pretty good for a brand-new rig, but at the same time, you always hear how, you know, you buy a brand-new rig, you drive it off, and depreciate it, you know, you've lost all that value, so I just wondered if we were--
You're not going to see it.
Had some sort of advantage by buying them through a fleet purchase or something like that, so that answers my question. Thanks, Shelley.
You're welcome.
And the other thing to look at, too, if you look at the age of the vehicles that are being replaced--
True.
I mean, by the new ones, they're going to be out there for 15, 20 years, so.
And we do trade them down, so, and our police department's really good with this on their admin vehicles also. They will trade those down as they become not as reliable to our other fleets, such as the Building Department, and the Building Department will get rid of an ID4 or something like that, and so we do try to, we try to get as much use as we can out of each vehicle.
Great, thanks, I appreciate the explanation. That's it.
Thanks, Rob, thanks. I mean, it's, anytime we ask a question, we get an answer, and I appreciate the fact that you've got that information readily available. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Any other questions?
I have none.
Not entertain a motion?
Move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the role.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Porter's?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. We do have one tonight. It's a required public hearing for the Community Post Falls Senior Center Community Development Block Grant, difficult for me to say, and this is required by law. Nancy May Bill is presenting.
Yes, thank you very much.
Let me open the public hearing. Further, if anybody wishes to testify, there are forms in the back, you can fill them out and turn them in to Shannon. Now I'll open a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, again, this is a requirement of the Idaho Community Development Block Grant, and the city's citizen participation plan that says you're going to have two public hearings, one prior to the submission of the grant application itself, which we did a couple of years ago. The second one is when the project, the actual construction of the project is between 50 and 100% complete. We're pretty close to that 100% complete now. I have to go over the accomplishments to date, the expenditures to date, the remaining work, and any changes in the project, and also the budget. So, moving on, what we have accomplished to date is pretty much everything. What I tried to do is show you a comparison of a photo I took and put in the grant application itself. To the left and on the right is what it looked like last week. Renovations include updates to the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, food storage equipment upgrades, removal and replacement of carpet, and the addition of vertical grab bars in the restrooms to meet the ADA requirements. Expansion activities include the slab-on-grade wood frame additions to the northwest-east of the existing facility, with extensions to the pre-engineered, whoo, truss roof system for purposes of a covered entry drop-off pickup area, main entry with waiting staging area, space for the community resource information displays, and food rescue displays, and additional dry food store space. And so the next picture is kind of a little lesson learned on my part, is when you're taking pictures for the grant application, and then you're taking pictures of the after, the before and after, really where should you be standing? So the purpose of this is the air conditioning units that were replaced, and on the right you can see how they're new, but it's actually from a distance. That is the, one of the additions there that you're looking at. The budget, the budget that you were provided is different than the budget I'm showing on the screen. It is not to intentionally confuse you. However, what I did want to show is that the seniors actually provided the city with about $62,000 more in their loan cash than the block grant application budget stated. So this is what we're going to be showing when we close out the project, not what you received in your packet. It also shows a negative $44,721 on the in-kind. That means that they've overspent their in-kind. The primary purpose, what happened here, is that I and the grant application had identified that the architectural fees were going to come out of the loan, and the senior center took most of that out of the in-kind. Bottom line is, is that the contractor balance to finish is $149,000, leaving the senior center with roughly $11,000 unspent. So all's good, it all balances out in the end. Remaining work that needs to be done is very little, the flooring in the west addition and the dougal room restroom foyer, insulation in the new attic spaces I had on there last week when I put this together, however, that's been completed as of this date. Demolition, drywall, paint, and flooring in the Finley Room, general cleaning, final inspection by the city, and then the exterior is the paint. Changes, there were some scope of work changes. We had to add some rebar at the north concrete stem wall due to the height of the wall, added patching and patching of the concrete floor for the cooler and freezer drain. The vestibule was extended by four feet. There were some electrical adjustments by adding lights at the front entry due to the vestibule extension, and we added some asphalt cut patch at the main entry. At this point, there's been minimal changes in the schedule, but the water damage situation may result in some delays. Per the contract, the contractor has to be substantially complete by the 12th of July, due to some of the extension adjustments that really have until about the 16th of July. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Questions, Nancy? Thank you, Nancy. Is there a staff report, or are we going to accept that? Thank you, is there anybody wishing to testify?
We have none.
And I will close the public hearing. And you need, you don't need a motion from us, I wouldn't assume, just for informational purposes, or do you need--
Because all it is is information.
Great. Thank you very much. Project looks great. Allison, we look forward to having it complete over there, and Nancy, thanks for your help. It's good to have you back.
No problem, thank you.
Unfinished business, we have none. Next up is citizens' issue, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council on a non-budget, a non-agend item, city-related. If you wish to speak, please come forward, we'll give you five minutes. Seen no takers. New business, Tolemore Development and Land Acquisition. Mr. Fair.
Mr. Mayor, Council, in your packet is my memo, and then also the proposed exchange and purchase agreement for a sports complex land at Tolemore Park. We've been working on this a long time, trying to obtain land for a sports complex. I think started with trying to buy Quad Park, and we've looked at various locations all over the city, so I can tell you it's a bit of a relief to be here before you today with what we feel is a good solution for the city. The sports complex is both a part of our comp plan and our impact fee capital improvement plan, and a lot of steps have been extended to get to this point. I've had a lot of help from Rick Nordham and from Warren Wilson, so I should really thank them because they kept me on track with this, and questioned a lot of things and made us think a lot of stuff out, but for the audience, just for a-- Just as background.
This has to be the projector, doesn't it?
You know, we started this agreement with a park design that had been approved by both the Park and Rec Commission and the city council. That was quite a long time ago. Unfortunately, the market collapsed, and the developer was then gone, so we had to start over. When the bank took ownership, we did approach them as looking at, was there a possibility of trading that whole neighborhood park for a sports complex, because the sports complex was so high on our list. We heard from the neighbors that they really wanted a neighborhood park. We heard it loud and clear, so we knew that anything moving forward, the park had to be in there. So when Copper Basin Construction came on board as a possible developer, we sat down with them, and we had to negotiate out a new design for the park, and that's what you see here. It's a neighborhood park, it's got parking, sports courts, playground, restroom, the basic amenities that we have in a, in a neighborhood park. Once that design was reached, I sit on top of that, we didn't want to let the dream die of the sports complex. Sorry for the glare, but to give you an idea of location, that's the proposed Tolemore Park, that's its footprint. The area we're looking at for a sports complex is up in here, it's the old Highway District pit, goes below Ross Point Water, so that's the sections that we're looking at.
Dave, can you pull down so they can see without the glare that what the top part looks like?
Okay.
Thank you.
So it kind of gives you an idea of the footprint there. So we kept working on it, and what we came forward was what you see in your packet, the agreement. And just to kind of go over the basic parts of the agreement, we're looking at trading required work from Tolemore Neighborhood Park, and using some impact fee money to obtain additional lands with reduced work on Tolemore Park. The lands we're talking about, the 8.3 acres of Tolemore Park, has already been deeded to the city, but we're looking at an additional 25.54 acres in two parcels, that's a 17-acre parcel and an 8.54-acre parcel. The scope of the work from the developer would be remediation of the pit per the geotech reports, I'd be crushing up all the debris inside to the set size, I think it's six inches or less, bringing in fill, compacting it up, and then adding, and it will all be topsoil in there. The rough grading of both sites, hardscaping at Tolemore Park up to $150,000 value, that would be parking lot, the utilities to the restroom, some pathways, and amphitheater. And then also doing the city's half of road improvements on Kildere and Charlesville along the sports complex land. The scope of work for the city would be, on Tolemore Park, would be the turf, irrigation, landscaping, playground and sports courts, and then the picnic shelter and restrooms, so we would finish it. Our cost to the city would be $345,000 for the land, and $496,500 is our estimate for the park construction for the items there. In some of the discussions, I was asked, you know, what does the city get out of it? And estimated value of it's $1.2 million, and that's based upon land values, the road improvements, and the greed-upon work. Does not include the land that was donated for Tolemore Park. What the city will expend to put in the neighborhood park and obtain the land will be $841,500. So, in my mind, we're getting a pretty good deal. The cost for the sports complex, we're estimating it to be $1.6 million to build it out at full completion. That would be phased in, it would be covered with impact fees, and we don't have a firm number on that because we have to have a design, that would be our next step. So I guess I'm open to any questions you might have.
Steve, when you take a look at the information provided, it says by July, January 1st, '17, the improvements will be made to Tolemore Park. Now that's going to be on Copper Basin's park, correct?
Correct.
When do you estimate the city will then have this much-awaited and long-delayed parking place for the residents?
We are looking at starting our portion of the work in the fall and running it through next year. I'm hoping by midsummer. My staff is probably rolling their eyes at me right now, but a lot of the finished work will be there to get the irrigation, and Copper Basin will be doing things that we don't do well. The hardscape, they're going to have the contractors out there, you know, the parking lot, and we're contracting that out right now, but we're very good at doing the landscaping, getting the irrigation, and doing the design work for irrigation, putting in playgrounds.
I think it's great, and these folks have waited years and years, as you stated, for parking, it's finally coming to fruition, so I like that. Linda?
I would just say, thank you, Dave, but honestly, I got a couple of phone calls over the weekend, so the sooner we can get that park done, the better those people right across the street from it are going to feel out there.
Yeah.
There's some kind of, there's some upset people out there, so--
Steve, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, Steve, once we come to an agreement, will start the earthwork and moving stuff, so they will see some work, it's just not going to be all green to start.
Your memo says that the cost can be through impact fees and augmented through grants. Do you have specific grants identified already, and have these been applied for?
The, the timing cycle for applying for the grants is the fall, so we would apply in the fall. They're due actually January 30th, 31st to state parks, and then they award them in the spring. We'd be looking at land and water. Most of the grants we're looking at will be for the sports complex.
What's the estimated hope of amount?
With the renewed land and water, Idaho's amount doubled, but that still puts it at about $800,000 for to a million that Idaho gets on the federal side. 25% of that is taken off and goes to cities that are under 5,000, so we're looking at, you know, $600,000 less, and then it's split, so if we can get to $300,000, I'd be happy. Chase Fields, we got $240,000, $230,000, which was a pretty good chunk.
More significant than I was expecting, honestly.
For land and water to get less than 150 is probably not worth the effort, but we do have to do the cash matches, so we, we'll plan it out.
Okay, thank you.
Joe took my question.
He does, exactly.
I could answer about another grant we could go for.
Once he figures out the haircut a little bit, it will be great. Any other questions? Thanks, Dave, that's good news, and I agree with Linda, you know, sooner the better, and Steve, appreciate you guys working with the city on that one.
I guess I do have one question. I'm sorry. The, the picture of the new park looks really nice, I mean, it looks like a nice park. I mean, is it relatively similar to what was originally going to be there, or is it a lot? I know that at one point in time--
It's actually--
There was a real fancy park in there.
Yeah. But-- We didn't have part of the fancy park.
Okay.
That was part of the HOA. The footprint is a little bit larger. We have less of the hillside. I think the last one, they used a lot of the hillside, so there was a lot of tree plantings that was going to be a pathway through that. Parking lots were shared, so we tried to keep the features that we felt were really good for a neighborhood park, and we did meet with, you know, the neighbors, or we did our public hearings and all that. We don't have the water feature anymore. That wasn't something that we were excited about, and I don't think the homeowners realized that the agreement was their HOA would pay for the full maintenance of that. So, minor changes, I think. We're trying to make sure that the parks we put in are usable and what people want.
Okay, great, thanks, Dave.
So--
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Al.
So, would we have an improvement?
Just a motion to bring an agreement forward.
That's right, that, we do need to have an agreement brought forward. Need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the role.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Porter's?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Next up, ordinances and resolution, and we do have one ordinance tonight dealing with the Hope Annexation.
Move to place the ordinance, Hope Annexation, file number A-16-01, on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the role.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Porter's?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Mr. Wilson?
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls, Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, providing for annexation of property consisting of approximately 9.54 acres located at the northwest quarter of said section 25, Township 51 North, Range 5 West, Boise, Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, and zoning said annexed property is single-family residential R1, providing for the amendment to the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.
Move to approve the ordinance, Hope Annexation, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only. number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Seen, then Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. We do have an item under administrative staff reports. Mr. Paulus?
Good evening, non-rolled mayor, members of the council. Let me just switch the PowerPoint presentations here real quick. Last month, you approved for us to issue a contract for the construction of the 7th Avenue improvements. Just a real quick picture showing you what 7th Avenue looks like, or what it looked like approximately a year ago. We're going to go over real briefly, what are the extent of the improvements that we're doing. I understand that you've been getting some questions along with what we've been getting at the staff level, and then also go over with you where we're at as far as the contract with the contractor. The road improvements associated with this involve upgrades to 7th Avenue, starting on Compton Street at its intersection with Selt East Way, down to 7th Avenue, and then heading easterly across Spokane Street, down to Henry Street, and then heading north along Henry Street and back to Selt East Way. The improvements, as you look at it from, this is the western half between Spokane Street and including Compton Street, the fine detail, there's some changes that occurred in the last bits of design, but this was the most accurate and most current conceptual sketch that we had. We're going to be putting in curb, gutter, and sidewalk along Compton Street and 7th Avenue. This will increase safety, especially for pedestrians, it will help locate where vehicles go on that roadway, and increase safety for vehicles as well. What we're trying to do is to take some of the traffic off of Spokane Street and the Selt East Way intersection, and give them an alternate route to preserve capacity in that intersection without having to do massive tearouts and property acquisitions. For the most part, there is not going to be on-street parking on this section of Compton Street and 7th Avenue. There will be a little bit down on the portion between Catherine and Spokane Street, and we've done as much as we could to preserve onsite parking. A lot of the parking lots and access to the apartments at St. Vinnie's and the apartment complex at the corner of Compton and 7th don't meet our standards for driveway approaches, but we took a lenient look at that because the only way we could bring them into compliance would, they would have lost 80% of their parking, and that wasn't going to work. So we tried to balance access with safety. On the east side of 7th Avenue going from Spokane Street on your left over to Henry Street and back up, we are going to be putting angled parking in on the south side of 7th Avenue between Frederick Street and Henry Street, and then there will be parallel parking on the north side between Frederick and William, and then a few stalls between William and Henry Street. At the intersections, we are narrowing the road a little bit to create ball belts, this will help keep traffic so they're not utilizing it as a flyway, and also to increase the safety for pedestrians who'll be utilizing that area for the shorter crossing distance. In terms of schedule, as I said about 30 days ago, or June 7th, the bid was awarded to Tila Riviera for just under 864,000 dollars. We received the signed contract from the contractor today, that is being reviewed by our consultant, and right now, we have a pre-construction meeting tentatively scheduled with them for July 21st. There was some discussion that happened late last week, and we're trying to confirm the contractor may want to try to move that date up and get the pre-construction meeting happening earlier. Staff is 100% supportive of that, we want to get them started and get them out of there as soon as possible as well. Key contract times that we have is once the pre-construction meeting is scheduled, and we get from them, they schedule their work, they have 45 days to complete, working days to complete that project. We do have a hard and fixed date in there of September 2nd, which is Labor Day, that they need to be done with the curb and gutter on the west half of that project. This is to accommodate our street department, who is going to be doing some maintenance and overlay of 7th Avenue and Compton Street. This was work that was previously scheduled for back in 2014, and we delayed it so that it could be done in conjunction with this project's completion. There is a water line that is going in on Spokane Street from I-90 up to 7th Avenue. This is replacing a piece of older asbestos concrete pipe and putting in a pipe that's more reliable. That work is going to be restricted in that the contractor cannot work in Spokane Street between 6:30 and 9:30 a.m., or between 2:30 and 7, 7 o'clock in the evening. That's a brief synopsis, are there any questions that you have of me?
Questions? Thanks, Rob.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, we have been getting questions, that's good to know.
Oh, one last thing. Once we do get a schedule from the contractor, I've already got the draft letter written up, we will be sending a letter out to all of the property owners along that road so they know exactly what the schedule is, that they have an emergent, or a contact with the police department for non-emergencies, as well as my phone number and the contractor's phone number. The contractor is also responsible for contacting and coordinating with the property owners. We do this as an added item so that they know how to get ahold of us if they have an issue with the contractor.
Thanks, Rob, appreciate it.
Welcome, Rob.
Next item up, for mayor comments, and I don't have anything tonight other than to, I guess, just mention the fact that, you know, we've had two drownings in the area over the last week. We've had ATV vehicles, we've had, it just seems like an abundance of loss of life. And, you know, it's, I know it's summertime, but I would ask everyone just to bear that in mind, that there are people out, it is summer activity time, be careful, you know, there's no solution for stupidity, so don't do stupid things, and the folks that have passed away, they weren't, but I mean, it's just a sign of, of indication of what can happen, so please, you know, do be careful, enjoy the summer, but be careful, especially in the waterways and off-road. And again, like I say, the folks that have lost their life, we're doing nothing wrong, but it happens, so, just again, please be careful, and we don't want to lose anybody else, it's too many already, so. Council comments. Joe?
You gave Russ a heads up earlier, I've had a, some complaints about the sewer lids, manhole covers, whatever, on some of the roads that are an inch or two below the pavement height, and it seems to be wherever it's been chip sealed, something like that, it raises the height of the road a bit, and then the sewer lid stays the same, so it creates kind of a pothole. I know some of the areas have been on handy, I think Ponderosa used to be that way, but some of those have been fixed. But there's several places in the city where that, where that's happening, and I guess it's just an annoyance, so I was hoping to get some comment from you.
Thank you. Council Malloy, members of city council, Russ Knoll, Public Services Director. We, we do receive these, this complaint periodically. Now, there's a couple of things that, that come up. When we're doing our street overlays, we typically do a two-inch overlay, so a lot of times, we'll come back then after the overlay and we'll raise those manhole lids, put a concrete ring around the lid, raise it up, and fix those. There are some on our chip seals, our chip seals are typically a quarter inch to a half inch. We usually don't see, you know, the depth variation, the two-inch depth variation that you mentioned. But I would encourage, if you do see one of these manholes that is lower than, is creating an issue when you drive over, do you hear, if you get a complaint, give, give me a call, let me know. I'll direct that comment over to the streets department, to Jim Porter, and he's really good at, at addressing concerns, so. We did have an issue on, on Greens Ferry at one time with that project, that was fixed. It does come up periodically. We do get some subsidence and some sinkage through water moisture changes over the winter, things happen, we'll get water where we hadn't had it, if we get a wet spring, and we'll see some of the roads sink here and there a little bit, and so we're, we're constantly looking for these things. But if you do see some, I encourage you to let me know, and, and I can let Jim know, and we'll try to address them as best we can.
So basically, guys, you guys just need to know where they are.
Correct.
Got it?
And I'll mention to the crews to keep an eye out, too, while they're out. We're in full force now out doing street projects, and so.
On the Ponderosa has been done, and it's just a beautiful, perfect job. On the Ponderosa Drive.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I give all the credit to Jim Porter and our street crews, they do a great job, these guys work hard, they put in a lot of hours, and often in very difficult conditions, they're out in the rain, they're out in the heat, and these guys do a great job, so we're lucky to have our, our street crews.
Thanks. Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
Al?
I just wanted to thank staff for indulging me with the questions I come up with for our meetings, I generally come up with a lot of questions, but I know the rest of council will reach out to you guys before council, but one of the reasons I do it here is because I learned a long time ago, there's people out there that have the same questions, so I bring them here. You guys are always very well-prepared to answer the questions, I just wanted to say thanks again.
We had that discussion earlier today, Mr. Borders and I did, and it's a good venue for it, because you're right, people do have questions, so, thank you. Carrie?
Well, I wanted to thank Captain Knight and everyone from the Post Falls Police Department for maintaining law and order over the long weekend, and also Deputy Chief Ryan here, Dan Ryan, is here with Cootney County Fire and Rescue, and I'm wondering, I don't know if this is, if I can do this, because I want to get this correct, Chief Ryan, would you come down and, and provide information so that these comments are correct? But kudos to two of the people with Cootney County Fire and Rescue, who will be receiving, and we believe it's in a couple of days, a state award from the Department of Idaho, American Legion, so they will be submitted for national awards from.
If you're going to ask me their names.
Yes.
Councilwoman, stage fright just took over.
Was it a Justin or?
Justin Capal, firefighter of the year.
Yeah.
And then EMT of the year.
If I say the name, it's going to be the wrong one.
I am so sorry, I'll get back to you all on that. But two people from Cootney County Fire and Rescue have received state recognition and will be going for consideration for a national award, so that we have.
That's awesome.
And we've been very fortunate that there have been a lot from our department that have been recognized at the state level, going clear back, I think past Mayor Clay Larkin was one in the mid-'70s.
Wow.
So we are really fortunate, and I'm sorry that I'm just not prepared tonight with those names.
She should have asked you before.
Thanks, chief. Congratulations to both those, I, I can't remember the second name.
He's going to so owe me, yeah.
Can't remember the second name either, but I've known Justin since he was like this big, so more power to him, he's from a long line of firefighters, a good family, so. We do need.
Jacobson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One more comment. Just as a reminder to everybody, there is a car show that's a part of the Post Falls Days events that will be held this year in the parking lot here at the city hall. In the past, it's been held up at Calvary Lutheran on Cherry Street by the Mullen Trail Elementary School, so it's going to be held this year in the parking lot down here. There is a breakfast that goes with that, starting at 6:30, provided by the senior center. So we encourage everybody, it's moving a little closer to the events, and we're encouraging everybody to attend that.
Thank you very much.
And Mary Jacobson, I just wanted to mention that in the Cord Lane Press, it was mentioned that the chief of police of Cord Lane has been invited to the White House, and I wanted to mention that our chief of police has also received that same invitation.
Oh, that's great. So I figured he may have. Good, thank you for sharing. Congratulations to Chief Holgan and Chief White, two fine men. We do need an executive session tonight.
And how long do we need?
15 minutes.
Always hope.
Move to enter into executive session pursuant Idaho Code 74-2061C to acquire an interest in real property which is not owned by a public agency. Further, that no action will be taken during this session, and the session will last approximately 15 minutes.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you very much, we will adjourn to executive session.